Okay, good morning, everyone. Called to order our meeting for August 21st.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Weymeyer.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Dickinson.
Present.
Let's have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we might have some correspondence in organizational business from the Main Street Society, or did you want to?
Yep, so.
Yeah, okay.
Good morning, Commissioner, sorry, you guys.
Good morning. Keep your toes here.
So, it's been awhile since I've been in here, so I just thought I'd give you guys kind of an update. I have a few different things here. But I just thought I'd give you an update of what Main Street's been doing. So, since I've been in here, we have loaned out two IWW loans. Are you guys familiar with our IWW loans? It is a incentive without walls. It's a state program that we have money that we can loan out to businesses, and it's revolving. So, when they pay that money back, we can then loan it out to somebody else. So, we've been able to do two of those recently. One was for, both of them for downtown businesses. We have a district they have to stay within. One was for infrastructure repair of a roof, and the other was for equipment for a new product line to expand their business. So, that's what these, there are restrictions. They have to have, like, they had to be for facade or building repair. They can't just go buy inventory with it and resell it. It's a 0% interest loan, so we don't make anything on it, but it helps the businesses. It sometimes can be a gap filler if they're needing to purchase something or do something like that. So, that's a benefit that we offer as the Main Street. We've been actually helping businesses apply for grants recently. Most recent has been the HEAL grants for our downtown buildings, and then Rooms Grant, which is an upper-level living grant through the Kansas Main Street. The other thing that was exciting over the summer, we were able to, from last year's Tourism Conference, I found out about the Sunflower Summers Program. It is a program that is open to all families in the state of Kansas that have kids K through 12 for free admission to activities. I was able to get listed two different places here in Ottawa, the Historic Depot Museum and the Plaza 1907. Both of those were able to be listed on the Sunflower Summers app, and it's open to all families. So, if you have a kid, an adult, and a child, it's free admission. That business thing gets reimbursed through Tourism on those ticket sales. So, in the past, we haven't had anybody listed here in Ottawa, and I was able to get two listed on there. There are requirements that fit on there. So, it's been kind of cool to see different people from around Kansas checking those. So, we don't have the stats on those exactly yet, but I think they do a report at the end of summertime. The other thing would be our Third Thursdays. You guys have graciously been letting us use the courthouse lawn, and it has grown. We are averaging at least 25 vendors each month, so much that we have filled out the courthouse yard, and we are going and putting vendors in the 100 block as well. This last month, so the 15th, we had over 500 people through just the vendors. My data shows that we had 1,300 people downtown in that three-hour span, and we, just from our receipt raffle that we do, we had over $5,000 spent downtown in that three hours. So, there being more perceived, businesses are starting to stay open later. Just people that are going to dinner, they're like, oh, let's go to dinner, and then let's go to the vendors. The other thing would be our entrepreneur grant that we got last year to make as a pilot program. We had our community visit in July. We still are learning more about this. We had a lot of interaction throughout the day. It was a full-day setup. We had no idea what our responses to our surveys were before they came to our visit. Out of the three Kansas communities, one had nine responses, one had 20 responses, and Ottawa's had 51 responses. So, that was pretty good. We're still learning on what our next steps of actions to implement those are. They did interview local entrepreneurs and, like, business owners and get one-on-one feedback from them and what they'd like to see or what they're liking or what they need help in. One of the most exciting things that we've been working on over the past year, I'm sure you guys have heard or seen the sidewalk paintings, is the common consumption area. It is, it has been passed in February, City Commission passed it. We have our first event set. This has to be done, the common consumption is not open at all times. It has to be opened by event. So, I will be opening it for different, you know, tractor show weekend, car show weekend, different things like that. Our first event will be September 7th. We are calling it Brews Beats and Boutique. We're having a ribbon cutting at 11:30, and we have live music and sidewalk sales. And we're trying to make it a family-friendly, come downtown, spend the day, enjoy the environment. We're continuing to communicate and educate people on how this works because it is not open at all times. So, this does not mean that you can just take an alcoholic beverage at any time. It has to be opened. I've had ABC come in. The city has worked with me, and we've met with each individual business owner that has a liquor license, where everybody's on the same page and the expectations. The other thing, you guys have some photos. I know we had talked a little bit about murals. I've recently, we had applied for some grants. We did not get the grant. However, even just yesterday, I found out about some material. If you look at the photos on there, those look like just regular murals, right? That is actually aluminum, and it is very, like, economically more effective. It's recyclable, one, but two, it also is much cheaper. So, I didn't know if this would be something that you guys would be interested in looking into. I can explore it a little bit more. But there's a lot of different options, just to show kind of size. I was worried we were only going to be able to do, like, little bitty ones, but as you can see there, some of those are pretty good-sized. So, no need for an answer on that right now. I just wanted to bring that forward to you guys as a, something I just found out. So, the next thing that I wanted to talk to you guys would be, the National Main Street has a transformational strategy workshop. This would help me gain perspective, understanding the transformation strategies, learning the market analysis techniques using the data surveys, and investigating the district. It's an actual class that would practice developing techniques with hands-on, and they would use their communities, but then it would also help us with hands-on examples of our own community at the class. It is in Des Moines, Iowa, in October. It would help me have new ideas and bring ways to grow our downtown and encourage entrepreneurs to open brick-and-mortars and what they're lacking in between there, what those barriers are. I'm coming before you guys because it is a class that we'd have to pay for, and it's $1,500 for the class. There are some travel expenses, like, if I do go, I would be, like, we would pay for the travel, that kind of thing. And the other thing would be the Tourism Conference. I had gone to that last year to have representation from Franklin County, and the cost for that this year is $350, and it's in October as well. I know it's not October right now, but I was just trying to be proactive and trying to get those moving, so. I would stand for any questions, if you guys have any.
Questions?
Are you full-time yet?
I am not full-time yet. We are very much working for that. It does look like that I will be able to be going full-time after the first of the year.
Well, you're full-time, you just don't get paid.
I volunteer a lot of time.
So, there's a question of the Tourism Conference for $300?
$350.
$350?
Is it $350?
$350, yeah.
All right, thank you. You did this last year?
Yes.
And as well as a number of other things too, right? But we've been, the relationship between us and Tourism.
Yeah, so the last time we had, the last time we had talked was for the mural, and we didn't end up using that money.
Sure.
Because we didn't.
Came back pretty high.
Well, we didn't get the grants to complete that project. So, the last time I would have been here would have been for the tourism and the website.
Sure.
Or for, yeah, the conference and the website.
I was saying, you've been using the matching puzzle, the bid tax. I forget the.
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship, that's the word I was looking for.
Yeah.
More than in the past, and I think you're doing good things, so. So, the question of the Tourism Conference, who did that last year? Were you interested in?
I would be.
Yeah, two yeses?
If we don't have anybody else going from the county, yes.
Okay, I agree, so, all right. I think we'll be good on that. We can vote to, well, might as well.
Make a motion to approve.
$350 for the Tourism Conference to Main Street?
Should I move?
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, then there's the education proposal. Any thoughts on that?
There, have you approached any other of Main Street's partners to assist with that expense?
Are you meaning, like, the state level?
Well, just maybe local partners is more.
So, I have, I have not approached any other, I mean, we're in the middle of our negotiation, talking, funding with the city. The traveling expense, I am looking at trying to get some of that covered by sharing the travel with somebody. Other than that, I haven't been able to. And part of that, there are scholarships out there, but with me not being part-time, it makes us not a designated community. And once we get to full-time, then it could potentially have more scholarship opportunities for these things like that. And it wouldn't, even then, I don't know that it would cover all of it, but it's usually like a chunk to go towards it, or a discounted rate. And that's our goal, is to be able to get to those kind of things. Right now, it's one of those things where, like, this is the closest this class has been offered, and the cheapest has been offered for us. Passed on it a couple other times, just because the travel alone was going to be just as much or more than the class. So, this is the closest I've found it to us right now, so.
Say, every year, we have a kind of an open enrollment period, a period of time where sponsorships are applied for, and we put all those on the table, and then look at their virtues and go from there. I would think in your first years, you know, full-time, and I know you're busy, you're pursuing a lot of things, there's probably plenty of opportunity. Otherwise, if this doesn't happen, I would personally, given that it's a bigger dollar amount, encourage you to go in the, through the process for sponsorships.
And is there a way for Main Street? You're saying sponsorship or partnerships? Because you guys have a difference in that, right?
Well, no, he's talking about TGT sponsorships, which you did participate.
Yeah, I was, I was very late getting into that, though. So, like, the same day I turned it in, I got it.
Yeah, and some of them, I mean, like all folks, especially when they turn in multiples, some of them are successful, some of them are not. We have a limited amount of money. We kind of, I mean, more than we ever have before in the past. We're putting quite a, sending a lot of that money back out to the community, but like anything, the requests outnumber kind of what a reasonable budget would be. But, yeah, you've had some good luck with that in the past, and that's where I would probably like to see it, just for equity and fairness, so that everybody gets a fair chance, and they don't have to, you know, everybody's on the table at the same time, so. Your thoughts? $1,500 for the education component. That's just my opinion, but.
Maybe table, a bit, see what else we can come up with on different entities, or?
Well, I think what Colt's saying is we have an application period, a sponsorship program, and to be perfectly candid, I have no opinion on this class, and Sarah's done great things. There's no, I think the inequity would be if we continue to provide funding to Main Street after the fact, then we need to call Ryland with the chamber. We need to call all of our sponsorship partners and allow them to come in for additional requests as well. And what Colt's trying to say is he would rather keep it confined to that period where, now, do you want to make a one-time exception for Sarah? That's certainly within your prerogative to do that. But I believe for equity, I agree with you, Colt. Moving forward in the future, we need to have that program open for a period of time, and.
My thoughts exactly. Attorneys are always more articulate than me, at least.
But that we have the funding to do this, and I don't, I mean, I think it would just, if it was the desire of the board, you would, I think, need to be clear that this is an exception. If you agree with Colt's sentiment, that this is an exception to what we would normally do in terms of limiting requests to that specific application period.
Thoughts?
Well, not the whole 1,500. I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind, you know, it's a one-time thing.
Yeah, and I just, like, the Nationals rules this out. I think we were made aware of it two months ago, whenever it would come out. So, I don't necessarily know when they will have the next one to, and so it's one of those things, I've passed on a few of them because they're not even close to radar of where I could even make a feasible travel-wise. And this has, like I said, been the closest one that we've been to.
I just think that in this day and age, surely there's got to be a lot of online training opportunities.
And that's what I do partake a part in a lot of them right now, is the online, just because expenses of the travel to a lot of, this one's, because it's a hands-on approach, and they actually take you out into the communities to teach you the techniques, and they're comparing, they actually have two communities that they compare, and then they also compare it to your, use your own community as well, and they pull the data on it while you're there. So, it's like a crash three-day course.
I mean, like she said, she's not going to know about it during our open enrollment period kind of thing.
That's the hard part, yeah.
Yeah.
Fair point.
Although, then I also thought about, like, your Piccadilly. You didn't know about that last year, but this year, this coming up year, you will know, so that's something that you probably can comment and request.
And that's something that we hope to be able to do, use that money towards that kind of stuff, that I might even be using part of that to get me to part, or full-time this year at this point, so.
Somebody could say yes, could suggest another amount, or could just hold on to it for awhile, since we haven't voted to no, that's.
I will say I have a deadline.
Okay.
I'm sorry. There's only eight spots open as of yesterday left in the class.
So, be yes, we could suggest another amount.
I was thinking about like a quarter of it, 375. I don't know.
Well, we're working that exists. Then there's the question of the mural, and I would.
That was more, I was just kind of giving you guys information that that's an option that we could kind of look into. I can look into more on the pricing end of it.
Okay, and I was going to say, if you are looking to get temperature of the room before you put any more effort to it, we could do that, but if you're going to go get pricing anyways, then that would be.
I literally just found out about yesterday my community visit, and it really, you cannot tell unless you really investigated on it, that it is aluminum stuck to the wall.
Yeah.
And they're getting two to three, some of them have been up longer than three years, but you can kind of tell, like, where the corner or something's coming up. But most of them, they're getting two-plus years out of them.
Yeah, I've seen this, they're new, they're sharp.
They have quite a few of them downtown.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you, and I'd be interested in hearing what the cost of this, those is, myself.
Thank you.
Now, our agenda, do we have any public comment today?
No.
Consent agenda includes meeting minutes from August 14th, tax change orders in the amount of negative $56.64, claim vouchers are $1,780,262.44. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes, that adds a business. The first of which, the treasurer's here to discuss personal property tax warrants that are older than 20 years, and to consider writing them off. Good morning.
So, this is something that a lot of counties just do every year. I've been here since 98, and we've never done this, to write these off. Previous treasurers had talked about this procedure, and before they actually would write them off, some counties will hire someone to, like, a firm to collect on these, but the county wouldn't get very much from the collection. It would just be a minimal amount. So, this would take, and as I guess you have it in an email, unfortunately, my program won't give me anything that showed just the years I wanted, so I apologize for all the crossing out, et cetera. But in adding everything up to take off 20 years and older, so that would be from 2004, prior to, and prior to that, just the tax alone comes to $123,218.64, which is a sizable amount. But as you can see from the list, there's ones from '91. Pretty much, if anybody's got things that far back, they haven't paid, they're not going to pay. Personal property can stop you from tagging a vehicle, but you have to have a vehicle tagged in your name. A lot of people know how to get around this, and so they don't put it in their name. They put it in spouse's name. Or if it's a business, they have to have the same business name for a registration, and a lot of them that are on these lists don't do that. They, they have, like, maybe their personal vehicle, and then they have, the business is the personal property tax that we're looking at here that hasn't been paid.
So, this isn't something you brought to us before? I just want to make sure everybody first understands, I guess, the who, what, when, the basic facts of it. So, personal property tax, what would that include?
So, personal property is divided up into oil and gas. There's also heavy trucks. So, someone who has 16,000 pounds and higher on their registration, they would pay the tax separately in registration, just in motor vehicle. It's also boats, boat motors and trailers, mobile homes, vehicles that they still keep, but they don't register, and so they're, you know, just sitting there either waiting to be fixed or, you know, whatever the case may be. And so, there's a lot of variety there.
Equipment, machinery, that's not exempt?
Exactly, yep. And the laws had changed there for personal property with the state that if you bought new, you didn't have the personal property, but if you were still using the old, you had personal property, which doesn't make a lot of sense economically, but that's what they chose.
That's what, how's it collected?
So, it's a regular tax, so it's due at the same time as a real estate tax. So, first half would be due December 20th. Second half would be due May 10th of each year. If they're not paid, personal property does get sent to the sheriff's office for them to collect it. It's not that they go out and collect, it's just the resources go into them and then make their way to the treasurer's office. And then, after each set, we send them, to them twice. The first half, where no, they've paid nothing whatsoever, that goes to the sheriff's office. And the people that paid the first half, if they don't then pay the second half in May, then those groupings go to the sheriff.
So, if it was a house, which isn't personal property, it would be sale and foreclosed on, but what's the mechanism, the enforcement mechanism on personal property? Is there any?
Debbie Huff, the previous treasurer, had told me that when Rex Bowling was here as sheriff, there was a business that word had gotten out that they were going to leave the area, and so Rex took his deputies out, and they went to the, that place and confiscated what he could of any kind of cash and things like that. But that was before I started in '98, so I really don't know any details.
Extreme situation.
Yes, yes, mhm.
If we did send them to the collection agency, would they just collect and then take their fees out of that? Would it not cost us anything? It doesn't seem like we're trying very hard to collect anything, and then we're just like, oh, well, they're not going to pay, we're going to write them off. I'm like.
That's where I was getting with the enforcement mechanism. So, another one of those, they can't register a vehicle, but is there any, for instance, there's a state set-off program, the state runs a program. Does it, do these tax warrants automatically come out of, let's say, tax return or refund, anything like that from the state?
Unless the company had something.
If we contracted a company. Now, the state set-off program is a free program the state offers.
Right, so those would be like the ambulance things.
Like, the treasurer would have to do is just give it to them.
Mhm.
There's no cost.
Right.
I think if there's a collection, there's a percent of that maybe, I'm not even sure, but like, our ambulance service uses that.
Mhm.
That would be a free option.
And the gist of getting this right now to bring to you is a new software program. All these ones that are on this list will have to be brought over into the new system, which is a lot of work in itself, and we're hoping to streamline that as much, you know, as possible, so.
I think our concern, at least mine, would be that the value of these, though, is considerable. Now, I look at them, and I get some bankruptcies struck out. Those are automatically take, those are taken out of this number? That you're aware of?
I, I don't know, I don't remember for sure, to be honest.
Say, I think on the one page, you had, it was, they were struck out and said bankruptcy, but.
Yeah, and those I can't publish even for those back years, so like.
Well, just saying, is this law, list already, have you already got there taken out? Say, the bankruptcies, maybe the deaths, signed or no? What's that?
I have to see.
Death in there for sure, pretty good cycle.
Do you know which page that one was on?
The second to last.
Okay.
Where did I see it? I think it's second to last. No, those are crossed out.
Yeah, there was one.
Somewhere in here.
The state bankruptcies.
Oh, here it is. Page 10.
Page 10. Thank you.
I guess my question is, have these already been gone through, and have, you know, deaths, bankruptcies, things like that already been identified? So, meaning that the net, the remaining ones are conceivably still collectible, they're still active businesses or living people?
Yeah, let me look at this by page here.
If so, that would certainly be a vote towards not, the logic of not forgiving them, rather pursuing other means of collecting them.
And it is quite a bit of money. I do agree with you on that for sure. And like I said, the only reason this is being brought up at this time is it was mentioned through going, getting ready for the software change that we, that we drop these, so that it doesn't have to be moved over. But if you would rather that we go ahead and see about a collection agency.
Understand, is if these are likely people who have deceased and their business or failed businesses, and this is a list of junk paper, then, yeah, we're likely to consider what you're proposing. But if those have already been culled out of this list, and what we're seeing is people who are presumably still in business or alive, then no, I would suggest you pursue collection.
Well, I know a lot of them are deceased, a lot of the, like, Ottawa hotel, that's not, you know, not.
So, now the list hasn't been gone through, okay.
So, so the ones in red are the ones we're still going to collect on, but anything that's not, doesn't have a line in, they're all the old ones.
The black and white printings, I don't know which ones are in.
Oh, I'm sorry, anything that has a line through it, do you have that?
Uh huh, I see the white.
Right, and so unfortunately, the program, in a perfect world, it would have just given me all the ones from '91 on to 2004, but unfortunately, it just prints everybody that hasn't paid. And so, I did not include those in the numbers, the ones that are from 2005 forward.
Forty years old.
So, yeah, they are not in there. And I can say that since I've been treasurer, that there's only been two that had been really old that I was able to collect on. One was a person here locally that had a business, and she had her name only as an care of.
How did you, how were you able to collect on them?
She put her name on her dad's registration, and so, yeah, so then.
They came in and paid it.
Right.
Didn't do anything.
Then she had no choice because I wouldn't let her tag then, so.
What I would recommend.
What I would recommend, I mean, clearly, we're going back twenty years. There there's no sense of urgency here. I'll gladly talk with Dustin about what bringing this over into the new system would entail. But there have been a lot of good questions. If nothing else, I think we should explore, does the state set off program apply to these debts? If it doesn't, are there companies? And and we know there are when it comes to like ambulance service debts. So I would presume that there are. Are there companies that can help us collect on this? And if they, if there are, what fee would they charge us in order to? I think there's enough here that we ought to at least take a look at it, fully explore our options, and then vet this list a little more and see what kind of dollar amount we're looking at.
My last concern comment would just be that the statute that provided, the statute seventy-nine twenty-one oh one, the last slide says above fifty dollars, we're not allowed to allow to become delinquent, forgive essentially, which the majority of these, a lot of these are. I guess there's a lot of thirties, twenties dollars, but there's a lot of them past the three digit mark and some thousands.
I I think those we would just have to fi, if their desire was there, we would have to file something with the district court and have the court wipe those out.
Yeah, I do.
Would be a considerable number of filings, I guess, but.
Well, but Jody has talked with the district court administrator. And if the desire was there, I think we could streamline that.
Got you.
But I guess I would ask that we don't go there yet.
Yeah, sure.
Like I have not dug into this, let me see what is out there. And we can make a little bit more of an educated choice, maybe on what we want to do. If it's a data entry thing, I can learn that from Dustin. And if we need to free up the staff to assist with that, like that's, I mean, that that's, to me, is not enough of a reason to wipe out six figures of delinquent taxes, at least not without thoroughly exploring it.
Seems if nothing else, we need to figure out a way to collect, a way to to try to, I mean, even if we wipe out twenty years or older, there's a whole bunch of others that in the last twenty years that.
Particularly think some of these people are still active.
And I'm looking at these names, I'm like, oh, yeah, they're still in business.
Yeah, exactly, but know how to evade the consequences.
I wonder also if it's a possibility that we don't bring this into our new system, but we still work on actively trying to collect on these and then distribute these taxes once they're collected, much like we do a payment in lieu of taxes. So I think there's still ways that we could.
Not move it, but it's not written off.
Yeah, yeah. We we do, we do have some sense of urgency here because of the new system. But it looks like we're probably not going to be going live in the new system until January. So we do have a little bit of time, but we want to make sure that we're acting on this.
But what's the sense of urgency, Janet? Just that we would have to decide whether or not to bring it over?
Yeah, to tell the the vendor that whether we're bringing this stuff in or we're not.
And who, Dustin, who brings it over? Is it the, would we have to pay the vendor to do that? Or is that something the county staff?
Well, we just had to do it line by line.
It would be part of the data conversion into it. But I believe Janet could confirm this, that part of the challenges on that is assigning a tax rate. So these taxes from nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-four, whatever years those are, we have to know what rate this property was taxed at. So that those rates can be put in and those calculations can be done correctly. It's not just bringing this dollar figure in with this piece of property. The new system has to calculate that.
He's right, and I built I've built that file for the new software vendor for the last, I think, twenty-one years at this stage. Because when I when I built that whole file, it was a year ago. So I think we've got twenty-one years built in there. And so then I would have to go back and build these additional years, so.
But if we left it out, would that alleviate the need to build that file? And would that then thus remove the sense of urgency? If we just decided we're not going to convert it, we're going to leave it?
Yeah, that's that, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, that maybe we don't convert it into our new software, but we we, you know, actively pursue, you know, collections on that. So I I think that that's a possibility. I don't, I I'm not suggesting that that we make that motion today. I think that definitely need to do some more legwork to determine what we need to do. And and I and I agree, six figures is a lot of money to forgive, even if it's over a time span of, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. I mean, it's still a lot of money, so. I mean, it would definitely make.
Chance we're probably ever going to get those six figures, but paying taxes stinks. The only thing worse than that is when you pay a tax, it'd be unfair or inequitable, so.
Or if other people are paying their taxes and some people are not, are not paying theirs, yeah. It's not fair.
Most reasonable people are willing to do their fair part, it's just when others aren't.
At one point, didn't the state no longer tax machinery and equipment?
Yes.
Taxes here that we charge, but we would no longer charge because the state.
A lot of these businesses, yeah, had old, you know, fell under that old ruling. And so when the new ruling went in, if they were still using their old equipment, they were taxed. But if they bought brand new equipment, they weren't taxed on it.
And a lot of our.
Bolted down or not.
Yeah, and a lot of our like manufacturing centers, they went and bought, like spent the money to buy new equipment so they didn't have to pay the taxes. So they just got rid of their old and brought a whole new thing in, so they didn't have to pay the taxes.
Okay.
The only thing that I would see that I would wonder for the future, because I'm not going to be here. But to collect on it later, you're going to have to have a plan as far as, you know, how is it going to get receipted into tax if it's not even in the tax program? So that kind of of an issue, but.
Unless it's just like about payment in lieu of taxes or something, we'd have to figure it out, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, this is nothing that's going to make the treasurer's office have less work or anything like that. It's just that this was brought up during the meetings for Tyler Technologies. And so I was asked to to do this, so it doesn't harm me either way.
The state of Kansas, the day after it's due, and they they said you've had, then they will send you a warrant. So, you know, one day, one day after it's due, there there's a warrant out that says, you know, go get get what you can. And it seems like we haven't done anything. So we need to at least figure out something.
Yeah. Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Staff reports, Derek.
Yeah, only thing I I want to talk a little bit about today and not too much. Transient guest tax was brought up, Sarah brought up the courthouse lawn. Love, love the fact that we've got folks using that. Would do that all the time if we could. We have discussed irrigating the courthouse lawn, adding some landscaping, not that's going to eat up usable space, not in an attempt to stop use of the lawn, but to make it easier for our maintenance staff to help the repair of the lawn. Because when you've got folks on it in the dead of summer with no water, it gets pretty deep down. We've discussed this on and off for a couple of years. That would be a a perfectly good use of the transient guest tax would be right in the heart of downtown Ottawa and involves what I could argue is the preeminent tourist attraction in Franklin County, which is the historic courthouse. So with your permission, I've had Brandon compile a list of landscape engineers just to, we're not spending a dollar, we're just talking to them about a potential design, getting a price, and then at that point, bringing it in to start having that discussion with you. Just want to see, make sure, I guess, that there's still an appetite for that.
My knowledge would never turn down a single request to use the courthouse. We get quite a few of those a year. And a lot of that use is in the fall. So if it can, the lawn, the turf can be strengthened up during the summer to withstand that, it could be traffic. That could, there could be some solid logic there.
Yep, absolutely. All right, thanks, that's all I have, Cole.
I'm going forward with the plan.
Morning Commissioners, just want to share a couple of dates with you. We are in partnership, FCDC in partnership with the Ottawa Chamber and Ottawa University are hosting some folks from Panasonic that'll be in town on September twenty-fifth at the university from eleven thirty to one. They'll come and share with us an update on what's what's going on with that plant and their kind of their rollout, and also provide time for Q and A. So this is open to the public. I'm hoping individuals and businesses that are interested in learning more about the Panasonic plant and and having a chance to ask questions and learn about the impact as far as wages and hiring timelines and that kind of thing. So again, that's on September twenty-fifth at Ottawa University. It is by RSVP, after RSVP by the eighteenth. And it's on the Chamber website to do that. It's seventeen dollars, we'll provide a lunch. And it'll be up there in the gang, second floor of the Gangworth Gibson Building. But encourage anybody and everybody that has an interest in learning about the Panasonic operation to come in and hear on that on the twenty-fifth. And then yesterday at our e-community meeting, we selected February twenty-seventh will be our youth entrepreneurship challenge day. And if you recall, we did this last year at the university, which is where we'll do it again. Had great success with kids in our community from all the all the districts. As I've shared that with each of the districts. And certainly want to open that up to folks and kids that are homeschooled, and they can reach out to me if with questions on it. We'll start rolling out more information. We just selected the date yesterday, so I wanted to get that date out. And then more details to follow. But excited to do that youth entrepreneurship challenge again. Last year, first place was a thousand dollars. Second place was five hundred dollars, or seven hundred fifty dollars. And third place was five hundred dollars, so some pretty nice cash prizes. So that's all I've got, unless you have questions.
Paul, do you think, do you think the individual from Panasonic, and this seems like a stretch, but I want to ask anyway, do you think they would have any info or be able to intelligently discuss potential subsidiary industries that that may be looking to locate in the area?
That's, I think that if they don't share that, I think that's a question that I certainly would like to ask and see if there's an opportunity for them to kind of share some insight on that.
And to elaborate, one of the things that has excited us about the Panasonic plant is initially, we were told that it would bring a lot of subsidiary is my word, but industries to help with the Panasonic plant. So industries that produce products that would be used in that plant. And that makes a lot of sense to me. I just, I have not received any follow up, and I suspect you haven't either, Paul. But that, talk about potential uses of proximity park, I mean, that that would be outstanding. It's just, I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, no, that's been pretty quiet. So I think that's certainly a a perfect question to ask when they're here. Just remember, too, the other thing I should share with you, I'm heading up to Kansas City later this morning. The Kansas City Chamber is having an update on the World Cup stuff. And so I'm going to go and see what I can learn about any opportunities our community might have relative to the World Cup in twenty twenty-six, so trying to keep an eye on that as well.
Are we a part of the Greater Kansas City? The, when I had lunch with Ben, he said something about if Franklin County would be interested in joining the Greater Kansas City, something, and I was like.
ADC.
We're part of the KC ADC, yeah.
Are you talking about like the statistical catchment area or something like that, whatever the federal?
No, it's it's more of a.
Ego devo.
Yeah.
We're part of, it's the Kansas City Area Development Council, right? And we are part of.
We already are, okay.
Yep, yep, we pay dues for that every year. And it's and the subsidiary of that's called Smartport, so we we belong to both of those.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Sheriff's Office, no, Public Works, Jeff.
Good morning, Commissioner. I mean, I'll try to be brief. We have had a lot of things happen in this week out on Old Fifty Highway. They continue to do concrete pours. I believe they did about twenty yards of vertical pour this week, as well as install some culverts and some things that were in the process of being done. The utility issues that I talked to you about last week, I know they've temporarily had the fiber line. I I believe that hundred pair line is still exposed, so it may have been a deadline, quite possibly. I wouldn't think they would leave it open that long. But we, it's, I was out there this morning and it's still exposed. We are actually onsite today helping Kilo with a drainage issue. That's partly our responsibility because it goes off road right away. And I I want to thank them. It's it's very nice to actually be working with a local contractor. It's been a good experience so far, and those type of things really help bridge the gaps in what we're doing. I've received a couple of the requests to work off right away where we need to improve drainage also. So we'll be working on that as soon as we get Kilo out of their way and and they've got their culvert work done. As far as our work on Old Fifty, we have completed the work done by Williamsburg on the roughly three quarter mile stretch for the widening. And we will be moving up to the inside part of the curve there at Ransomeville, probably later this week or first thing next week. So everything seems to be on track and going smoothly. And I'll keep you posted.
Jeff, I know you say it to your people all the time, but but want to say it publicly. I I know that widening work is is difficult. It's frustrating, it's very slow. And when you've got a group of guys that like to work at a fast pace, I absolutely know that's testing them. So I want to say that see it, don't take it for granted, appreciate all of the effort that it, I mean, we know that road is very narrow in spots. And the work that they are doing is going to make it so much safer. In theory, going to prevent a lot of accidents. So really appreciate the work that your folks are doing.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Derek. They, you're absolutely right, all of this is very difficult. And I want to thank the the crew that are out there doing that. And I also want to thank the folks that are trying to keep us afloat while we're out there doing it. Because we are built to do maintenance this time of year with some improvements, but this is a massive improvement. So I've got a lot of people that are, you know, we've had some rain events and some extreme conditions that we just don't have the manpower to go out and do the things that we typically do that you see. So I I appreciate also the public's patience with us.
I was going to say a similar thing, you brought the road widening, but the fact you're making your shuffling around, making your folks available to fix these issues that come up or what prevents change orders. And so often we see, you know, a project that was estimated at a million and it ended up being far more. That's what you're preventing there.
Correct, and and we've reached out to several of the people that typically thought that their things were going to be done this year and had good communication. There's a lot of understanding there, and and it seems to be working really well. But we're, we are robbing Peter to pay Paul, there's no doubt, and it is showing.
Without going out and hiring a whole bunch of people?
Yeah.
You know, and I was just thinking that when you were talking about that, that you're doing all this in addition to all the other things that you usually do. And I know this is not where you signed up for your first year, but you've done.
I've got great people around me, and that's the best answer I can give. They know what they're doing and they and they're doing the best that we can right now, so we appreciate.
Cash on hand and not having to come up with the money to pay those over because you're doing the the taxpayer a real favor, your folks are.
Yes, they are, so thanks for bringing that up, Derek.
We used to talk about this a lot, and Cole, I apologize, I'm talking a lot today. You're going to stop inviting me to these meetings if I. We staff to the level that meets our average workload. And we used to talk about that all the time because we, you know, there, in the past, folks get frustrated. And I feel like the sentiment is we should have enough staff to cover every conceivable issue that arises. But if we did that, we would be overstaffed. And then that would not be a responsible use of tax dollars. And what Jeff is saying is we've got so many of our guys on this that so much of the normal work, we're having to communicate and let people know there's going to be a delay, and you're doing excellent at that. And and what we found is that folks are reasonable, they just want to be communicated with. Like, we have to allocate a lot of our resources right now to fifty. But once that's done, that's going to be so much better. And then we can get back to spreading our resources out as we typically would.
Correct, and and most of those things are maintenance related. I mean, we're behind on mowing, we're behind on some of the blade works. It's it's general maintenance that's taking the hit. It's, it's general maintenance that's taking the hit right now. And as long as people understand that and continue to work with us, we'll get there. It's just going to take some time.
Thanks, Jeff.
Good conversation.
So on a tax perspective, I just want to let you guys know that, um, today is the first day that taxing entities could hold their hearing if they plan to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Um, those notices went out on August 5th. They have to have a 10-day lead time. So they had more than enough time to get out for those entities that are having their meeting today. Um, I, we did, I did have a question pop up through Commissioner Stottlemyre about why we allowed, um, some of these hearings to be on the same day. And I just want to address that. Um, I, I cannot possibly police all of these entities and make sure that they don't have hearings on the same day. And unfortunately, there are, um, quite a few hearings on the same day that we held, just, we held ours just because it's in the middle of the timeframe. Um, there are some that are at seven. There are others that are at six, just like ours is. Um, that's not something I can police. I can't be, um, a master scheduler and make sure that taxing entities are not overlapping themselves. So I will so, say, Wellsville City's meeting is at the exact same date and time as our meeting. And I am sorry about that. Um, again, I did not schedule these. Everyone was entitled to schedule their meeting when it worked best for them. And most of them scheduled it at their regular, um, their regular council meeting times or their regular, um, school board meeting times. So, um, those are, should, are on your revenue neutral rate statements. If anyone has any question about when a particular hearing is, I can look up revenue neutral rate statements and talk to people about the statement in general. Also about when those hearings are and how they can be there. Um, and many of them, I have their budget on hand in my office already. So I can provide a copy of the budget in advance of that meeting if people want to see those. So today is the first day of, of those hearings are starting. And those go through, um, mid-September. So if anyone has any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them.
You guys got questions about the statements? Do you get many questions about what are these numbers?
I get a lot of them. They.
Say, I've got a few. I don't know if maybe, I'd be curious. I guess I go to your office and you can tell me. But just to see how you counsel people and how you go through it. I mean, I can read it and explain what the numbers mean, but.
I did get email, one person, but I never thought about it. But it ain't something, each of us have our own, but, I mean, does affect, this, this one person, I guess. And, but we can't, you know, we can't, uh, make that always work. I mean, I never like, really ever thought about it before, you know, till they mentioned it. But, uh, like, she's the.
Oh, making all the times not, uh, not, none of them conflict. I think it'd be real difficult when you get a situation like Pomona or, so their school district goes into another county. So then you'd be coordinating with that county and then part of that town because it goes into, um, what you call.
And, and we have about, I think we have six school districts that are, uh, I'm not the home county for. The, another county is the home county. So, I mean, those, them trying to coordinate with us and those taxing districts. Um, like you said, um, West Franklin School District goes into three other counties. So Douglas, Douglas, Osage and Anderson. Um, even more complicated possibly is the Wellsville School District that goes into Miami Johnson and, and Douglas Counties. So that, that's a very complicated school district. Um, not to mention all of the overlapping, um, fire districts, um, recreation districts, you know, all of the cemetery districts, especially out in the West Franklin School District. There's a lot of cemetery districts just because of the diversity of that land out there. So it would be very difficult, like I said, to, for me to be some master scheduler and make sure no one scheduled their meetings on top, on top of keeping track of who needs to publish early because they're not being, they're not exceeding revenue neutral. Who is exceeding revenue neutral need to publish later? And getting all of that stuff put into that, that report and that program, generating those notices, getting them out to our company that does the mailers for us. It's in a very complicated situation, even with the, the things that I have to do right now without adding on a complexity of trying to not schedule meetings on top of each other.
Couple of years ago, Kansas Association of Counties said we have the sixth most taxing districts of any state. So we're number six out of the 50 states.
Paul, do you get, sorry, I am, do you get questions about how to read the statement? What revenue neutral is?
No, about how to read the statement and what all these numbers mean. Because if you don't run around the terms all the time, it is confusing. That's why I'd just be curious. I'm sure it's meant, the volume you get, you're very good at articulating that and counseling people. I mean, I can, like, I can read it, muddle through it, but.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to, happy to talk to any of you guys about that. I would say probably, um, equal if not more questions that we get regarding them have nothing to do with the amount of tax that's being charged on the statement, but the fact that they disagree with the value that's being placed on their property for one reason or another. Um, most people vehemently, who call me vehemently disagree with the fact that valuations have been going up on an average of 10% per year. But, um, we can see it when Jamie, um, is in compliance every single year um, for his ratio study that's done by the state. So, um, that's comparing across the state. And we can see that, that he's in compliance. So I, I can't say that we can disagree with the fact that these values are going up 10% each year. And in theory, if we, if we tried our very best to keep it as close to revenue neutral as possible, then that should limit their taxes from going up, um, following suit with the valuation increases.
If somebody can't be here for a budget hearing and they do have an opinion, you know, our emails are online. If you send me an email, I will read it. If you post it on Facebook, I will not. So, you know, if you, if you need to go to Wellsville or, and you can't be two places at one time and you do have a comment, I would be glad to, um, to read it, consider it.
Commissioners, Don?
Yeah, I did go late meeting the other night. Uh, this main thing on their deal is, uh, water improvement, water tower, water lines, all the small town has the same issues there. And cleanup issues, that's another big one. And, uh, Sheriff, appreciate the Sheriff's Office always seem to have an officer at every meeting, except for Wellsville, which is not necessarily a fair, but, but, uh, and, uh, and appreciate they asked him, they'd like, they'd asked the request of the sheriff would see a little more visitation, I guess, to their community. And he explained to them, but what was funny about it, when I, 15 minutes after that statement, I left town, there was a sheriff's officer sitting right on the edge of town, watching traffic coming in and out of town and another at their city meeting. So I'll be sure to mention that to them when I go back to their next meeting. So, uh, I had just got the email about that deal. I'd never thought about it. Same times before. That's never been an issue. Uh, but I just brought to Jenna just for her opinion on it, you know. Um, and I did get one other email. Person sent me one, wanted to know why Franklin County hadn't worked with the state like Miami County. Well, there's a lot more to that story on working with the state on 68 Highway, expanding it to four lane. Uh, yeah, maybe Miami County did approach it and, and ask them to speed, which that was the end. The most traffic and the heaviest, if something was going to happen, that's where it's going to happen first. But they don't realize this, and, and Miami didn't realize, once it got done and started, they got a bill for $4 million for their share of helping with the deal. So, which was just almost out of the clear blue sky. And they had to come up with that money to, you know, for their, maybe have a small portion, but it's still, I wouldn't think like to ask get a bill for that. But anyhow, it's something, in one day, it'll happen out there, you know, with growth, keep coming and all. But the only thing out there even ever brings up is the traffic at, at the DC. I don't miss the traffic anywhere else like there. So that's all I got.
I just had some chamber events. Um, Cirque Physical, which is like basically right next door, had an anniversary celebration. Um, Sparkwheel on two, yesterday morning had, um, which used to be community and schools. Um, basically they're champion for some kids that just need some extra, um, help. And then, uh, last night, they had an after-hours chamber for Fusion Alley and Primetime Grill. Um, six years. It's been a while. I, you know, it's like, couldn't believe it was that long. And then, um, then you think, oh, well, that was right before COVID too, you know. So not only are they still going strong, but they dealt with some really tough stuff right at the very beginning. But that's all I've got.
Paul, I did want to, I want to mention two other things. Um, the Republican Party will be holding their convention tomorrow night, um, at the courthouse to replace the treasurer. Jody Edwards has turned in her resignation to the governor. And so the convention for that is held tomorrow night at the courthouse at 7:00 o'clock. Also, Don mentioned, um, water being a concern for our small cities. Um, the Chamber of Commerce exit issues is coming up. And they're having a speaker, um, come talk about, um, water. I think specifically pertaining to the Meritaseine Drainage Basin and where our water comes from and how we can, um, help the water situation. And I think the deadline to file for that is on Friday. So, um, if you want to go to that, be sure to let us know. So.
Motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Is there a second? All in favor? All right, adjourn.